Work session for the board trustees. We appreciate everyone's presence here and your interest in what we're doing. We just finished an outstanding press conference. And I want to thank Chancellor Baker and his staff for setting that up, the contributions from the President of Lawson State, Devil State, Mayor Hamm of City of Auburn, and just all excellent. It was just great again to have Jeff Lee on board with us and looking forward to some really great things in the future. We'll move forward with our agenda here for the work session. The first item is fiscal. It's a bond refund for Jefferson State Community College.
In 2007, Just State and the State Department of Education entered into agreement with the City of Clayton to build an educational facility in the City of Clayton. And at that time, part of the agreement was that the City of Clayton would pay $870,000 a year for 45 years toward the public debt, the net service. Late last year, the city approached Just State about paying a prepayment of those funds instead of continuing the $870,000 a year that would actually have been a month's on the head of over $10 million. And since that time, that has occurred and those, the bonds that were available were called and that most official colleges have been called and paid and poured. And what the college is requesting to do is to refund the outstanding balance, the outstanding bonds that are still out there. To do this, they're requesting to refund $14,755,000 in bonds and a net present value savings of about $2.4 million. The life of the bonds, the extent that they would still expire or mature at the same time as the original issue.
Any questions for Ms. Lomond? Love to hear about these opportunities. I do think I've asked this before and I'm sorry if I don't recall what we do, but have we a practice of reviewing bonds and looking for opportunities to refund on a regular basis or how did these come up?
Well, this typical one was a little bit different because of prepayments and the cost of the funding. But we did have financial advisor Bill Watts who had renewed all our bonds over a period of time and he has recommended the refundings as he thought the savings would allow or would be official to colleges. And one thing that I will mention, you probably seen, you may have seen the resolution related to this refunding. And I will just tell you right now, there have been a lot of back and forth changes. So prior to the board meeting, I will provide the most current resolution and the preliminary official statements so that when you're renewing, pardon me. And we had to check out some of the numbers at that time as well.
Any other questions? Next item is renewal lease agreement to Wallace State Community College Hansville with the Alabama Department of Agriculture Industries.
Good afternoon to you all. Wallace State Community College Hansville wishes to renew its lease with the Alabama Department of Agriculture and Industries, which is part of the Hinden Mission Poultry Diagnostic Laboratory Facility. The Department of Agriculture has for many years operated the state's poultry diagnostic lab at this facility. And the lease, proposed lease, will cover 8,400 square feet with a rental price of $5.71 per square foot. This will be for a five-year term and have generate $240,000 to the college over the life of the lease. College will be paid $4,000 a month for the rent of this space. Does anyone have any questions?
Their indemnification clauses in the lease agreement are there?
No, they are not. And the reason for that is we are dealing with another state entity.
Not the next items, the general liability insurance.
Yes, sir. We received this morning a quote from our current carriers for a next year's general liability and garage liability. And I'm pleased to report that there has been a zero increase in the proposed agreement. We still have inquiries out to other carriers. And if we get anything competitive, I will certainly distribute that to each of you as early before the board meeting as possible. But I was pleased to get this quote back with no increase.
Questions, comments? The next item, the next item is proposed 200 series policies, reviews. Is there any comment Alabama?
I'm here. What was the matter?
Is my work here?
Yeah. Thanks, and I'll still celebrate. Just, I guess, a quick report and update on the 200 and partial 600. The 200 series policies have been, I guess, updated and revised by this new board's presence in some items we've been talking about concerning governance of those 200 series items, which you all know include a lot of issues related to the board, the system's relationship to personnel and the management of those issues within the system. Those have been circulated and out to the presidents within the system who had until late yesterday afternoon to file any type of comments or suggestions regarding those policies. We did get three or four comments back. Those have been looked at. Susan Price and Michelle Sylvester have been very good with me on these things. We've made a lot of progress on them. I hope to get that full package out to the board's policy committee within the next week along with, there were some leftovers, as you all might recall, that are interrelated to these personnel items that are in the 600 series, dealing with personnel issues that we'll try to marry up. And one of the things that we're trying to do with those two sets is look for those areas where there may be overlap and duplication so that the courts with your wishes try to streamline some of those policies as best we can. The hope is that the policy committee of your board will get a chance to review all of these within the next couple of weeks, come out and back to you for full board review so that you will have the opportunity to consider those at the regular session for full adoption. I know this has been a long and a glorious process, tedious work, but one that's necessary. And I know we need to get these policies finished. So I'm happy to entertain any questions coming about the catch-up on those, but that's kind of the calendar and process where we are at this point.
I like the idea of streamlining. Streamlining it. But will you identify the areas that you might be deleting or telling us the policies in another section? And I would agree more work for you, but that would be helpful, I guess, for the board's committee and for us.
Yes, and I guess I could ask you all this question. If this worked for you last time, we can either keep it the way we did it when we did the first, I guess, three or four series we adopted. What we tried to do is present them to you in two methods. One was in a red line version, which literally would show you by demonstration where something was struck out or where something was altered or changed in some way with a fairly brief, you know, explanation sort of at the bottom of the policy and what happened with that. For example, there are several policies that may be deleted from the 200 section or the 600 section because they're being moved and consolidated with something in the 700 or 800 section. So there's elimination of that duplication. And where that occurs, there'll be a roadmap for you on the red line copy. Red line copies, if you work with them, can sometimes be cumbersome because of all the strike throughs and the edits and just reading the document, it can be cumbersome. So you'll also get a black line version that shows you that policy with all the red ink off of it so you can get a real clean or easier reading of the policy. That's the way we did the once last go around back in April when we did that couple of packages, I think, three or four series. And Mr. Chairman, if that's acceptable, that's the way I thought I might present things to you again, if that's all right.
That system, that process worked out fine. They had no problem.
All right. Thank you. Roger. Next, we have a presentation by Dr. Rothner. This is an update on the ITT technical institute situation. And then I think following that, Chancellor Baker, who has some items that we discussed.
Thank you, Chair Thompson, and to the board, to the chancellor. Mr. Thompson and I had an opportunity last week after one of your conference calls to have a brief conversation about the ITT situation. I want to break it down into two different parts for you. As you know, the system office houses the private school licensure division, which licenses any institution that wants to do business in the state of Alabama. ITT was one of those institutions. And as you've also heard, because this is a national issue, is that ITT declared bankruptcy in September. And what that means for Alabama is our private school licensure division is responsible for the transcripts for ITT to maintain those documents. And one of the fun challenges that division is currently having is their bankruptcy attorney who's been set up for that, they've been unresponsive in terms of requests. So we're can't even get into the facilities to access to see what records are there. So we're working with the Alabama Commission for Higher Education, or A, as well as our Attorney General's Office to figure out how we get access to those records to be able to help the students that so desperately need it. They have set up an agreement with parchment services to get those transcripts. So that's one piece of it that we're trying to help facilitate as part of that. The other area within the Alabama community college system is the state approving agency, or SAA, which works with our veterans. We've been, that office has been in communication with our veterans to make sure they're aware of the resources that are available to them to be able to provide them with different options they have and where they go for questions. So we've been trying to be very proactive and reactive situation. The other piece I just want to do is give you kind of the scope of this as well. There were over 1,344 students that were part of ITT across three campuses in Alabama, in Mobile, Bessemer, and Madison. And then there were 74 students who were online with ITT through Indianapolis but resided in Alabama. All of those students have gotten communication from either PSL or SAA in terms of some other options. But what I did want to share with you today that is critically more important than what has happened with this is just the amazing work now that our system office has done through PSL and SAA, but what our colleges have done. As you may well understand, because I think many of you have received emails from multiple ITT students about what resources are available, what options that they have. Our colleges have absolutely stepped up and opened their doors to identify and help those students individually. Hundreds of phone calls, information sessions, outreach opportunities to say, here's what's potentially available and really needing to evaluate those on a case-by-case basis. And instead of going through all of the different things, what I wanted to do is just note that a few of those institutions, Bishop Faulkner, Lawson, Caldwell, Drake State, and Jeff State, because of their location and proximity to those ITT, they've gotten the brunt of those students in terms of those opportunities, had an opportunity to communicate with Dr. Sykes from Bishop. And Dr. Sykes, as well as Dr. McCain are here that can highlight some of the things that they have done to reach out to the ITT students, in particular, some of their nursing students, as kind of an example of not only what they have done in response to this, but of many of the things that they have done, our other institutions throughout the system as well. So Dr. Sykes and Dr. McCain, if you'd like to share with the board.
Peter, hear me? Sorry. Great. We have a short presentation, so we're going to stay here. The trustees and chancellor appreciate the opportunity for you to allow us to share with you what Mr. Baker is going to assist the board of ITT students. The day that the announcement was made that ITT would be closing, we were on campus to meet with the students, not faculty like McCain, who was on campus to meet with students. We have met with the students several times. Also, I received two phone calls from Bishop Widdon, President of SAC COC, who has given me her support, just asking us to work with the ITT students. We've also received a couple of phone calls from the Department of Education, basically encouraging Bishop State to work with the former ITT students. So Bishop State is committed to do what we can to assist the former students. And so what I'm going to do now is turn it over to Dr. McCain, and she's going to be more specific as to what we have been able to do to work with the students.
As you can see, our timeline, when we found out that ITT was closing, was like, okay, that's a great opportunity for Bishop State to get additional students because we knew that we were going to have a second mini-term beginning October 10th. And so with that in mind, we knew that we could actually assist these students pretty quickly, get them into classes if we could, and offer them some solutions. And so some of the things that we observed that we thought would be good to share, that a lot of these students were former community college students. They actually previously attended some college or universities because when we start looking at those transcripts, we realized that many of them were interested in their nursing program, attending ITT in nursing. And so those students actually had a lot of general education courses from our colleges. We were able to get official transcripts from parchment and majority of the syllabi for these courses were online. And we were fortunate as well, we had five faculty members on our staff who were part-time faculty for ITT. So we were able to get syllabi and letters from them saying that some of the course were and what courses were the same for us. A lot of the students needed financial counseling. We realized that they had to decide if they wanted to actually get the loan forgiveness or continue to pursue their college degree. And there was a large student response, and we continued to get response. And so this is the breakdown. We have about 65 students, majority 45 in nursing. So of course, that brought about a different animal when you talk about nursing. And so we really had to kind of ramp up in that area. And so we put together a response team. We actually identified only one person on campus. That person was the individual that all the students actually contacted. Admission's office had to be involved, and of course, financial aid and some type of counseling services, we provided that for students and as well as the academic dean's office. And so we educated our faculty and staff about PLA. We've had PLA a long time. Normally, it's handled in the academic dean's office. And so we knew that we could use PLA. And actually, some system office people came to our campus and actually talked to us about PLA and using PLA. And we used PLA. And so our enrollment plan was simple. Once we got the students to our meetings, we made them complete the application. They applied for PLA. We gave them a notice of acceptance. We awarded the PLA credit. And then we were allowed to register those students for second mini-terms, all of those that actually could take courses in the second mini-term. And so now, of course, the big elephant in the room were the nursing students. Many of them wanted to continue their education. And so we have done several things. We awarded the PLA credit for their general education courses because we had faculty on campus that actually taught in their general education program. And students were actually able to access their degree plan. So when we met with the nursing students, we actually gave them a Bishop State degree plan so they knew what courses they needed to take going forward. And we have requested from SAC COC that the 25% degree completion rule at our institution be waived. And so this is a breakdown of those 40 students. They are at various stages of their program, beginning, middle, and near graduation. And so we actually met with all those students and gave them a plan. Those students that are early in the ITT program, they have applied already to Bishop State for our new semester beginning in January. And those current LPN students, they can apply for March 1st or summer 2017 for our career mobility program. And then we have approximately 11 students who are near graduation this December or March of 2017. And then there were some students who were not eligible because their GPA was low. And of course, we had to go by all of our guidelines in our system to determine if these students were eligible. And so that's a quick update of what we've done at Bishop State. Any questions?
Does SAC provide you with that waiver?
Not yet.
When do you expect to hear?
We emailed Mike Williams yesterday, and she responded and said that she would get back with us as soon as possible.
Were the calls from SAC and from the Department of Education unsolicited? Just curious.
Yes, I do know that we had one group of ITT students send a letter to the Department of Education. And I think that same letter probably came from the system office. But we had already been working with the students and not students of Bishop. They were anxious, they wanted things to happen overnight. And we had already been working with them.
Do we have students' GPA was low, request remediation type or services?
No, not at this point. They were all nursing students. So they didn't need to bend the requirements to be accountable.
Appreciate very much the outreach. It's great.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
I might say that while we were with, she went out of her way to compliment the president of Bishop. The chancellor. Thank you, President's vice. Thank you, Dr. McCain. Appreciate that very much. Dr. Rothner, thank you for addressing this so promptly. And I think this presentation edition is excellent. And if there's any inquiry by the media, I hope they'll take note of this and see that the system, Bishop State especially, and the other institutions in the system have been proactive on this. And it will be so noted.
Mr. Chairman, one question, just a curiosity. What systems? Dr. Rothner, you mentioned evaluation. Actually, you mentioned the licensing that we do for these private schools. Have we the evaluation of the financial stability, is that a part of what we do in the licensing process?
Many of the institutions, I'm not saying the experts here, but they have to have a bond set up. And of course, one of the things that we're exploring from our meeting yesterday, what represented for the Attorney General's Office and for A, is that there's certainly bonds for ITT each for $5,000. But what that bond was set up for, we're checking the language, was to pay back students during potential lost tuition. We're not sure if there's any latitude to help with other potential expenses within this. Beyond that, there's the initial licensing requirements that they go through. And I don't know, and I can verify for you about the initial feature financial checks that might happen.
Well, it may not be on a roll, but it just seems that in the licensing stage, you want to understand at least on an interim period, their financial liability because we end up catching whatever they call, we're going to have to figure it out around the rest.
What is the acronym ITT?
No.
Oh, what it stands for. I think they're based on Indianapolis, a Denver, online institute. And I know it's, I was certified as an academic institute. I'm not sure anyone might know.
Well, I know that they have a separate online institute that's located in Indiana. So all of their online students, they're fully online, are part of that college. But they also have progressive where they upload bachelor's degrees and a few limited programs.
Yeah, they're national. It's not just now and now, they should work their experience across the country and it's significantly impacted.
They have a campus in Huntsville, too. And I know a couple of folks that instructed there. And even they had no clue about what was going to happen. I mean, they all, just as the students, the employees got the call the same day. So, you know, it's, I don't know, it just seems as beholden of licensing of these institutes. You know, maybe there's something we can get something to warn, you know, maybe with coordination with the Department of Education.
But this has happened before. It's happened now, and it's going to happen again. You can count with, I don't want to be a bear or private for best advice of any particular company, but because of the practice, some of the best practices that have taken place in the past, some of these, the reckoning is coming for a lot of these companies.
Let me, Susan, talk a little bit about some of the issues that are related to this. And it affects us too, but particularly with a lot of these private schools. So Susan, if you would talk about what we see in federal legislation.
Yes.
Coming on and some of the.
Good afternoon. Yeah, this is something that has probably been in the works for a few years. We've heard about it. I know the presidents have heard about it. We've all been concerned about it. But it's only in the last month that there was a first shot across the bow. And it's in the form of some legislation in Congress that was submitted in September. And the name of the act is the Accreditation Reform and Enhanced Accountability Act of 2016. And what this really does try to do is insert the federal government's control and direction in a major way to the accrediting agencies across the country. And this would affect our accrediting body, which is SAC COC. What it would do is really expand the Secretary of Education's ability to mandate very specific outcome measures, student achievement measures, that the accrediting body must then go and look for when it does its review. This is a major intrusion. And it's one that has, I think, everyone a little concerned. We love our federal government, but we don't necessarily think they need to be involved in every aspect and certainly not a prescriptive one for our accrediting body. It seems as though this has really come about, like I said, over the last several years with respect to some of the other of the big six accrediting bodies maybe not doing as much as they should. Some criticism about whether they are really identifying problems at institutions before they happen, not stepping in and sanctioning those institutions. And certainly the concern about what's been happening with proprietary institutions, the private institutions, ITT Tech being one of the big ones recently. So I think, Mr. Baker, what he wants to do is later this fall, maybe as soon as next month, have a more in-depth discussion about what this looks like for us because there are lots of moving parts. But the one that is, I think that you want me to just mention today, has to do with data and what looks to be the Secretary of Education's responsibility for really coming up with more measurements passed down through the accrediting bodies than passed down to the institutions. I know that we all like to talk about our accrediting agency and sometimes complain about them, but one president reminded me recently, one of the beauties of SAC COC is that it's a peer review. And so individuals who work for institutions are actually the ones who are out there really reviewing, and they can take a lot into consideration. It does. It does look like this particular legislation may affect whether there will be that kind of peer review in the future, and instead, give very little flexibility and really insert some very bright line measurements. These will affect the type of measurements we're looking at, or they're looking at, have to do with retention rates, employment rates after graduation, certainly whether programs are viable, Pell recipients that are at institutions, whether there have been large default rates on federal grant, I mean, federal loans at the various institutions. So, it is really a comprehensive bill. Now, we're not really expecting a whole lot of movement right now, but this is certainly an indicator that there are those in Congress who want to allow a whole lot more directive ability coming out of the Secretary of Education. I think the presidents have received a summary from Dr. Wheeler, I hope that's true, Dr. Wheeler summarizing really what this bill purports to do. And what I'd like to do is go ahead and send that summary to you by email later this afternoon. But this is something that needs to be on our radar. If the bill does not survive, or some form of it doesn't survive, it still indicates that there are changes coming. And we have to be all the more vigilant about our data, about good, clean data that's coming out of our system, coming out of our institutions. So, I think the bigger discussion, because there are so many other moving parts about what this really purports to do, will come at a later date in a month or so. But I think that you just need to be aware that this is happening, and since we have
I think I'm going to get astray.
Yes, sir.
Position is pretty simplistic from this, if you look at it this way. Federal government, through Pell brands, loans, whatever. Is providing a huge amount of money. That is being used by students. And so, a student that rolls and goes to court two semesters and drops out, then the question is, has our money been well spent? That could probably accrue to explanation, but those kinds of issues are the issues that they're really trying to get.
And that's the selling point of this particular legislation, because it really is in the best interest of protect taxpayer investment, because that's where that money is coming from. But it is extremely intrusive, and it does a lot more, and it, one could read this as really ultimately doing away with accreditation agencies as we know them. So, I think that Dr. Wheeler is planning to address this at the SAC COC annual conference in December. I'm sure we'll get some more information about that, but this is something that we do need to talk about. We want to talk about strategy regarding this.
Thank you. Can we just go on?
So, in terms of the strategy, in terms of addressing this and trying to be somewhat proactive to this, and instead of wanting to get a half a step ahead, knowing that we're already behind a little bit. Susan, Jeff and I had a brief conversation over the last couple of days of how we want to move forward with this. What I wanted to share, kind of highlight what Dr. Price was saying, is having that good data not only helps us build that culture of evidence, it provides you good decision-making ability, it also provides you that capability that you need for whatever we need to do in terms of moving forward. And there's a lot of what we're doing now that we don't have access to that good data or be able to validate that piece. So, what we're proposing, and I think you may have seen some of the suggestions in terms of moving forward, is having a potential third party come in and do an evaluation of where we are, not only here, in the System Office in terms of our data and our support and customer service, but also what we have available across the state in terms of our college resources from an IT perspective and a data perspective, and looking at how we can become mostly effective and efficient in terms of the resources that we have in addressing the challenges and opportunities as well.
Yeah, briefly, I think to continuously improve what we have, we have to have a baseline. And I think this is going to enable us to really figure out a good baseline where we are in all the databases and other IT issues. I know as far as workforce, a lot of decisions that we're going to make are driven by data, so the data has to be validated, verified, make sure it's accurate, and it's tied in from other systems and sister agencies like Department of Labor, Department of Homeland Affairs, et cetera, that will help us focus on programs, that will help drive the economy and prepare our workforce. So, it's absolutely imperative that we have a good, clean set of data that we can get decisions on, not only for workforce, but for many other programs, especially as Susan mentioned, at the federal level. That could be a significant funding loss if that data isn't correct and not reporting right back to the federal agencies and can really quick list in certain areas we need to make sure that this is a great opportunity to be.
And the other piece is to tie it in in terms of the draft strategic plan that you've all seen with those six goals. Those last four goals are really around the student success measures and those student outcomes, which are a significant part of this proposed act, and looking at that. I mean, many of our colleges are already looking at that data, collecting it, reporting on it, building the strategic plans around them. And what we need to do is make sure that we incorporate all of those pieces with our strategic plan, have the technical plans to meet those goals, and to be able to really move that needle forward with those student outcomes. And I think we're poised, like today's going to bend that opportunity of the great things that we've been doing, the more that we need to do, and we're in that position to be able to do that and to get in front of this and be proactive and engaged in our colleges, put that as a resource that we need to be for them and for Alabama.
I think we've already seen in our own licenses, it came 12, 10th, basically going down this path. So, I think we've all recognized it's going to, you know, I presume we're working to identify the parameters that would be metrics of which we would assess. And, you know, that's, some of them are going to be very difficult, because the nature of what we do in the Community College System is oftentimes, we educate and train people for a short period of time to be able to get just enough to go back to work. And that parameter is one that we need to be able to define and own, in my opinion, to be able to report successfully. That's always something I've seen as a challenge, so I'm sure we will address that if we go through. We established a timeline of resources.
And we're working on it. I know the chancellor had a meeting last week, and we've had talks on identifying some additional resources to bring in to do that. So, it's, most of the work we had to do was yesterday. But to your point, we'll actually establish a timeline of outcomes.
There'll be a lot of talking about it.
Anything else for the board? Thank you all. Thank you so much for recording this presentation. Anything else for the board? We'll stand adjourned. Thank you. One for me.